Welcome back at W N S T, Towson Baltimore and Baltimore Positive. And this is a positively Baltimore segment as we take a look at the election as the ballots start to arrive in the mail. All of our sponsors want to give them some appreciation before we get going, including our friends at Faedley's, where I'm picking up some crab cakes, some mac and cheese, some coleslaw and some crab soup. Curb side this week from Daimy. You can do it. You can ship those crab cakes anywhere in the world. The Washington Post wrote about them this week as well. You can find them out at Faedley's, our friends at State Fair. I am due for some chicken wings. I'm due for some shrimp and grits over there. I'm really due for some chicken and waffles, but that feels a little more indoor to me. Go visit our friends. Evan, they're still there out on Frederick Road in Catonsville, Don Muller's favorite place down the street for him in the 21228, as well as Muller and Gary Realty, still closing deals. And I'm about to close some deals with some friends over at Taharka Made in Baltimore, our newest sponsor, some Honey Graham ice cream. I am fresh out. You gotta tell Steve and everybody that I need to get some ice cream. Don, we got more than one election going on. I mean, we've been talking about all these things and special elections in the seventh and mail by vote or vote by mail, I should say, which I did for the first time. And I know you did with your wife Linda this week as well. We have a city council president race going on amongst other races. And I know we're gonna roll our sleeves up here and get going on this.
I can't wait. We've done a deep dive into the mayoral race and now we start to take a close look at the race for city council president. And we are delighted to welcome Baltimore City Council Representative from the 13th District, Shannon Snead, who wants to be city council president. Shannon, welcome to Baltimore Positive.
Thank you for having me.
Well, we have the same background here in journalism and you did, you know, telecommunications work on 13, behind the scenes, early internet, and you run for office. But the journalism side to making that move from asking questions to being someone who, as Teddy Roosevelt would say, you know, you're in it now and actually being able to, instead of ask questions, get asked questions, but also serve people. I'm inspired by your service and certainly for anybody that was on the journalism side. It feels like journalism shrinking, certainly at the hands of the guy down at the 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue as well. And we're fighting against that. But for you to be in it now, this is a fascinating transition. Did you always see yourself moving to this thing?
No, I never saw myself in this role. I was always the advocate writing the stories, spreading the word through television. And so that's essentially how I work. It's telling their story so either one, it won't happen again, or that we're more aware of our surroundings and what someone else is going through. And so that's essentially, I just always wanted to help people. So it's not too far off. It's just not in the broad masses. But I hope the policy does have a, that our right has a widespread effect for the Baltimoreans that are here today. And that's essentially why I am running for city council president. I want to make sure that, that I, I just want to make sure that I'm representing the people well in Baltimore City. And I know that we can do that through our policies. Got sick and tired of the, of the same people getting in office and not doing anything. And so I put my hat into run and I know I can make the change that the people want to see.
Well, did it happen in a moment? I mean, were you out with a Channel 13, Mike Flag or 45, wherever you were and saying, all right, this is enough? I mean, we had Bill Ferguson on who said that the moment it happened for him was the moment he had buckets in his classroom trying to clean up a mess and said, that's it, I'm gonna run for all. I mean, I guess it happens to everyone. We see these politicians and we never know, you know, when it happens.
It happened more so of, I said, I was ready to help the incumbent. I was a good writer and I was telling him my ideas of how we could like make a change. And like, I love my job working in the media. And so I said, listen, I'm a good writer. I can help you. He said, people don't want that. They, they essentially don't want trees and clean neighborhoods and new people moving in. That wasn't what he wanted. That wasn't his vision. And so I, we just got sick and tired of it. And so more people in my community said, you're the young one. You do it. My husband was like, you, you just stop complaining about it or do something about it. And I said, you know what? More people said, and I actually did something about it. I put my name on a ballot and said, I'm gonna run. And I've been successful in my community, especially on a grassroots level with just connecting with people, hearing their cries to change different policies around, one, making sure that they make more money, that minimum wage goes up, one, that we want to make sure that displaced workers bill, then making sure that we take care of contract workers. When it's time to give them a pay slip, at least they have more than two weeks. They have 90 days essentially and they're worth it. The people in Baltimore City are worth to get their houses in order. Another bill that we put in because there are more single mothers running our households, I put in the lactation bill so we can keep mothers going to work and keep their babies safe at the same time. And one that I'm really proud of is our residential requirements bill that says, hey, we need to make sure that our top officials live in Baltimore City. And so that's major. And the most recent one you saw, the gag order bill, that's what most people know it as, but it's really a transparency and litigation bill to make sure that we know what's going on in Baltimore City in terms of who are filing these lawsuits and who's involved in them. And since we had an issue with the police department inside, this was a great way since we can directly change the policy, since we, they don't fall under the city council, like agencies of DPW and DOT. But to make sure that when a lawsuit is a, comes up against a police officer, we essentially know about it, the victim can speak out, and then hopefully we'll get into the bottom of being transparent and honest. You can't just sweep it under the rug these days. And so that's really what the bill is about. So all of those bills over the last three and a half years, and no one can say that who's in this race, that they have put in strong legislation, that actually really, really, really common sense policy. And that's what.
Shannon, staying on the, on the, on the policy side for a minute, recently, there's been, certainly it's been written in the news and it's, you know, it's, it's been a bone of contention between the mayor and the city council. And that is efforts on the part of the city council to really rein in some of the mayor's powers, particularly as it pertains to vetoes. I know the city council had wanted to put before the voters in a charter amendment changing that it would require two thirds instead of three quarters of member of the council override a veto. And I think that you also wanted to extend the deadline for certain actions where you could consider overturning a veto. And the mayor recently vetoed both of those proposals. It would now take a special session of the council to get it on the ballot in time for the election. Where are you in terms of that issue between the council and the mayor at this point?
So that's a great, so the, the best example I can give you in terms of how it relates, $15, a fight for minimum wage. When we first got in office, it was in my committee. I saw to it that it actually made it out of my committee onto the mayor's desk as the chairwoman of the labor committee. That was my job to get that bill out. We got the vote, got it out, and then it landed on the mayor's desk and she vetoed it. We had, we thought enough votes since everyone basically was in support of it. The majority of the council was in support of this bill, but when it was time to override it, we could not get to 12. And that's where we really saw where people were. And in the most cities, there, you only need the 10 to override it. And so that's where, one, the difference of what $15 can make in our community, when people are working and they're making a decent wage, guess what? They're home with their families more. Crime essentially goes down and that's the direct impact of families, like what's happening in Baltimore City. And so we see it now, even through COVID, it's so important that we get our folks working, that we get our people back to work so they can take care of their families and people want that. And so that's essentially a great example of why we want to make sure that the mayor doesn't have so much power. It's important that the legislation, the legislative branch, that we're able to do what people elected us to do, and that is to create laws, to make policy. And if the mayor's job is to veto it or sign it, but if the majority is for it, then why would we, why would we fight that?
Then are you, are you encouraging, are you encouraging city council president Brandon Scott to call a special session so that you all can override this veto and get this charter amendment before the voters?
I have not had a conversation with the council president yet. And so until I have the conversation, but if it's going, remember, it's ultimately up to the people to decide what they want. So I think it's more important that we hear first from the constituents of Baltimore City and let them say, hey, if this is something we want to do or not. But it, it has to be on their radar. They have to know that this has been vetoed from the governor, I mean, from the mayor. And then we go from there essentially what's more important. And so to me, we're, we're not there yet.
Shannon Snead is our guest here on Baltimore Positive. She represents the 13th District. If we're gonna draw a map of the 13th District, I'm east side, but I was county side, Shannon. But you're Bel Air Road, Armistead Gardens, let's say, down to about Fayette and east out Monument. Is that about right?
Yes, and Upper Fels Point, Butcher Hill. Yes, yes.
Areas my wife and I walk through whenever we walk to Patterson Park from the Inner Harbor. She's running for city council president. You can find her at Shannon Snead. That's S N E E D. And of course, you may know her from television in the recent times and making a transition into, into public service. The mayor of Baltimore has specifically more power than other mayors. I read about it. I know about it. I know it's been wielded in different ways over different generations, maybe in a lot of ways that have been detrimental because of where our city has been and where it is at this point. Some thoughts about taking away the power of the mayor? Maybe one day you would be the mayor, right? So how much power does the mayor have? And in an ideal world for you, what would the mayor be able to do and not do?
So another great example is the Board of Estimates is where we say the mayor has a lot of power. And so that was also a charter amendment that's gonna go before the people of Baltimore City, if it makes it out of committee, to actually shrink the board. And so right now, it doesn't matter. No one has ever voted against the mayor on the Board of Estimates. And so that's why we're saying, well, make it a three person board. Make it the mayor, the city council president and the comptroller. You don't need the other votes for the mayor because they're gonna vote for the mayor anyway. And so it's just, it makes it that the mayor doesn't need all the power because either way they'll vote against it. Another, another ballot initiative that we were saying that, hey, maybe you can even shift and, and put like a council person up there. So it's still like not all citywide elected people, but someone that the council elected on the council, that could be an area as well. And then they also came up with, hey, why don't you, why don't you even think about having the, oh gosh, to get the budget out, they negotiated that during the hearing as well. Why don't you think about having the here, the, the budget actually, if they don't approve it at the Board of Estimates, why don't they try to get the, the budget to the city council if it's not out by a certain time? And so they're trying to, listen, I think more people want transparency, people want honesty. And so therefore, we are trying as a body, as a legislative branch, to do what the people are saying they want to see done and what we want to see done as well. We want to make sure that government is running effectively. We want to make sure that we have all the information and one person doesn't have all the power.
Well, I'm a citizen. Why is this so hard? You were a citizen, you were a journalist, right? Now, now you're inside. Why, why is transparency so difficult for the taxpayers here and certainly for a citizen like myself that, you know, listen Shannon, you know, I've done sports for 30 years. I mean, two years ago, County Executive Don Muller was my dear friend. I reached to him and said, we've got corruption here, we got problems here. And then, this is before Catherine Pew, we had the FBI come in. So, you know, we sort of predated this and Don was running the county. And I, I said to Don many times, why is the city not run better? What is it about this? And I wanted to roll my sleeves up, which is what Baltimore Positive is. You did this far earlier than I did. Tell, tell me as a citizen what we should know and the things that should be changed because I look at ShannonSnead.com and the first thing you have is combating crime, right? Like crime sort of, and the murder rate and that number from a journalism side, from a newspaper taxpayer, it's the number we see in front of us every day, right?
Yeah. So, and I think that's what we are essentially trying to do. It's changing, like right now, the city council president's office, it's so focused a lot of time on constituent services and not enough on the policy side. When you think of Annapolis and how Annapolis is running, where we have a, a legislative reference where you can, where you actually have help in policy. We don't have that in, in Baltimore City government essentially. And so what we need to do is try, is, is change some of the structure of what, of how it's structured. And so hopefully that will root out some of the corruption that goes on. But a person like me, a city council woman and the city councilmen in the different districts, we don't sit on a Board of Estimates, so we're not approving contracts. We are essentially not a part of, you're not coming to see us for a, a, a deal that's being done in East Baltimore unless you need essentially approval from the council, zoning or something like that. You don't normally see us. So it's not that, it doesn't go down that far. So that's why the little changes that we can make will make a huge impact. And that's why I'm saying it's up to the citizens of Baltimore City for the charter amendments to vote on these things. They ultimately get, if it, if it makes it out, and I'm saying if, if it gets out of committee, I need to go back because the mayor just vetoed these two things. But it will be ultimately up to the citizens of Baltimore City and that's what we were trying to do. What is it that the citizens of Baltimore City want? And that's ultimate, they want to see a change. And if we've had, we keep talking about the rotation of people coming into city government, but no changes had, it's important that we make these charter amendment changes, else it'll be the same thing.
Well, Shannon, let's, let's dive in. And again, I thank you for, for your time. We're with Shannon Snead, a councilwoman from the 13th District in Baltimore City, wants to be city council president. Let's, let's, let's take a look in the time we have remaining at some of the key issues. How do we get, everybody leads with crime and crime. So let's start with crime. Shannon Snead, President of the Baltimore City Council. What do we need to do if you're the president of the city council to reduce crime, reduce homicides and get the guns off the streets? Give us some specifics so voters can have a sense of what you're about.
Sure. The one thing, long term, to see a difference, we have to invest more in our students and our education system. We have to reduce crime. I think we need to take a holistic approach to this. We also need to bring in like the health professional, social worker and community leaders. Because when folks are calling 911 essentially to come out, once they get to the location a lot of times, it's not because someone is in danger. It's, it's because my child maybe won't go to school or I'm, I'm having a rough time. Like we call 911 when we should not be calling 911. So we can bring in our health professionals, the social worker, once we find out whether or not anyone is in danger. I think that's a better approach to it. I think we also need to make sure that we are, our police officers know how to deescalate certain situations, that they come in and they know how to immediately bring it down. Another part of it is expanding programs to me like Roka and Safe Streets, programs that are known to be effective in our communities. Another thing is that we also make sure that we are still having these police oversight hearings, that we have poorly in the city council. And so that's bringing up the commissioner and his top, and his top command staff to say, how many guns have we gotten off the street? What is the overtime looking like? How many arrests have been made for the southeast district or the northern district or the western? Like what are the stats? And that way we can hold folks accountable to see what's going on. You can't just say crime is going up and then not having the proper procedures to see for, to make sure that it goes down and then holding folks accountable to see how you are doing at this. And so that's what I think will totally make a difference to make sure that we, one, invest in our students. So in the long, and we don't even have to worry about being so crime focused in Baltimore City because we are educating a lot of our young folks from the beginning. So and investing in them from the beginning. And so by the time they're graduating from high school, they're going to college or they're starting their careers and that's going to make the impact of Baltimore City.
Well, Shannon, continuing with that issue, and I want to get to, I think folks will understand and appreciate the idea of investing in our, in our young people. I think they're gonna also want to hear plans for those who are violent criminals. But I wonder, all tied into this, what kind of grade do you give Commissioner Harrison so far in his tenure in the city? And are you supportive of the commissioner at this point?
I'm gonna say it's incomplete. He's, he, we gotta give him some time. It's not finished yet. The things that we've seen, the one, the response times, coming into talking to the council, coming to the community meetings, holding his people accountable, I think those are all the things that we have to get on the right track, right? Making sure that he's working internally to make sure that we change the culture inside the police department. Because we've seen the stories that Jane has done on, inside of the police department. We know the relationship is not that good between community and the police officers. And we know that in order to make a huge impact in what happens, we all have to work together and that's the bottom line. And that's from the state attorney, to the police commissioner, to the mayor and to our judges. We all have to be in this together.
Shannon, when, when a criminal comes back from, from prison into your, into your, are you aware, I mean, we, we hear so many repeat offenders, recidivism and, and what's happening behind bars when, when, when people are brought back into reality? And we see so many times that, that, that repeat offenders, and, and I think as a citizen, that's, that's even more frustrating because then we see a complete failure at every level in the system, right?
You know, I did a little time at the mayor's Office of Employment Development. And so the mayor's Office of Employment Development actually have employees that go through our prison systems and they talk to folks who are going to be released. And what they try to do is make sure they connect them with the resources to get a job when they come home, make sure they have a point, place to come to if they need any other resources in terms of how do you get your license, your social security card? That's what the mayor's Office of Employment Development does. And so what I think we really need to do is focus on, before you even get out, here is a checklist and these are the things that should be almost like required to help you on your journey, that there is a job that you can go to, there is a place where you can live to go to. Because if those little things aren't what we consider low and little, if they are not met, a person is going to continuously struggle. So if you don't have a place to live when you get out, then where are you going to live? If you don't have a job when you get out, who's gonna hire you? It's gonna be a constant struggle. So before you even get out, we have to make sure, or our state officials have to make sure that those policies are almost in line, that checklist is in line for these folks who are returning, to have everything that they need to be successful when they get out, so the streets will not be an option. And so I don't care at what point, I don't, that's not happening. And I know that from working at the mayor's Office of Employment Development. And I know those caseworkers go out, they go to the prisons and they try, but they're still released without having that information. And I think if we can work on that piece of it, it will make an impact.
Well, Shannon, building on, on your focus on communities, tied into the crime issue certainly is always drugs, drug addiction, opioid. What would be your focus? What would be your emphasis to try to address this opioid crisis that's really a nationwide issue?
There's been some studies done recently with safe places. I think I would love to see it connected to some of the hospitals, just because it's an addiction, right? It's a, it's a, it's a, I see like how you need your chemo, how you need your dialysis and some folks look at it, they, they need that. So I think it's almost treating it as really you have to go to the hospital, you have to have certain people to help you and to guide you is the best way. And so it's not a standalone. It should be incorporated in our healthcare system. So maybe having something that our hospitals would be essentially better and wrap around services around it. So again, addressing your addiction, helping that out, also giving you what you need if you have a safe place to live. All of those things will truly make a difference because what we want is them to be off the drugs. We don't want them using, we want them to be productive citizens.
Shannon, go ahead.
Nester, women, Nester, I want you to pay attention to this next part because we can't let Shannon get out of here. Shannon, we know you'll want in 2016, but Nester is, Nester, because of his commitment to public service, often himself thinks about running, whether it be for a, a city council spot, whether it would be for mayor, whether it be for delegate. He talks about running for office. And in that vein, I'm curious about 2012 because you did something in 2012 that those of us who fancy ourselves as experts when we know we aren't, would say never can happen. You ran a write-in campaign and I would have said to you, well, Shannon, that's fine. Go out, have a little fun, do a write-in campaign. You don't have a chance. And you came within 43 votes of winning a council seat as a write-in candidate. How in the world did that happen?
No, no, no. So the, we did, it wasn't that close. That was for the regular primary that we were that close at that time.
But you came within 43 votes, right?
But we did, we were very, we were really close, but by the time they, they added up all the other ballots, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was close, but it wasn't that way.
Did anybody think you could win but you?
No, people did. I'm telling you, it, the people definitely, but a lot of people said it's a waste of time, don't do it. But no one thought we would become, come within 200 votes in a write-in campaign.
How did you do that? I'm asking for Nester.
No, I mean, she has a master's degree in, I mean, you, you didn't do all of that to like run for local office, right? So like, that is just a fascinating thing and no one thought you could do it either, right? I mean, you were the real underdog.
Yes. And even in this race for city council president, I would say that until COVID, we are not doing anything differently because we are still, we were still at the time knocking on doors, going to community meetings, talking to residents, calling them, asking folks to please call their friends and family. Like it's, and I, and it's still, the day after the campaign was over, I was still in my, at the community meeting the next day, speaking with my residents on, what are we gonna do next to get our community right? Or working or whatever. I remember that day, just, you know, we lost, but it's still work to be done. And so a lot of people disappear after campaigns and that's what I am known to not do. I'm in my community, I'm accessible, people know that they can text me and call me, they'll see me in the supermarket, they, they will see me at church. And so those are the things that make a difference. When I'm picking up my daughter from school, when, you know, we're popping up on my hus- at my, when we're popping up to check on my husband at work just to say hello, people see that and they feel connected. And I, and I'm glad they do because they are essentially my neighbors and friends and family. And that's how, again, we make Baltimore better, all of us working for the greater good.
Well, Shannon, we have about two weeks to go. How do you, we've talked to every candidate campaigning in a pandemic, it's just a totally different thing. For two questions, how do you feel about the state of the race and can you win?
Oh, absolutely. They said that I couldn't raise the money and we raised money. They said that there was no way in this day and age that, you know, someone would huge name recognition, that we would come close. Not true. And so that just goes to show hard work, a person that's committed will go a long way and that's what we're going off of. People are sick and tired of people, Donnie C. is getting in and people, you know, half working. They know that I'm committed, that I've been working in my little, I say my little three and a half years in office, this is, these are all the things that we've accomplished. Other folks have been in that are running, they haven't, they've been in the same time I've been in and haven't put any bills passed. Other people got five years and they've only put two bills passed and, and missed a significant amount of votes. People are, they're looking for someone who's gonna work for on their behalf and I am the person to do that. I've been doing it and I will continue to do it.
Well, we appreciate you spending some time with us and we'll look for your name and all the candidates' names and we'll, we'll sign our name on the back of the ballot to make sure that, that it's all legal. We've been warned about all that and Don and I are veterans now. Shannon, good luck to you. We really appreciate the time and thanks for the backstory as well. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Shannon Snead, 13th District. She is the city councilwoman who is running for and in this election for city council president. So a number of candidates, all of them, you can find up online in various different ways. You can Google that out and the G B C has a list up as well and other places. Don Muller and I continuing to talk to candidates, mayoral candidates, educational leaders, as well as a great conversation with Stuart Pittman, Anarod County Executive from last week. You can find all that up at Baltimore Positive. A big thanks to our sponsors, including Faedley's, where I'm getting some crab cakes and I am gonna, I'm gonna show the picture of that mac and cheese ad on social media. You'll be looking for that. You're gonna want to get your own Faedley's and get it delivered to you, as well as our friends at State Fair over in Catonsville, promising me that I'm gonna get some of those Old Bay wings and I'm, I'm gonna stop over. I haven't been a to Catonsville in like, two months. Haven't been anywhere in two months. Look at my hair. And our friends at Moller and Gary Realty. Jeff Moller's still closing deals. If you need a Realtor, if you're in the market to buy or sell your own, trust our friends at Moller and Gary Realty. And Jeff Moller, I gotta get him back on the program, too. Been doing a little less sports content this month. We'll get back after it as they ramp up baseball and football next month. And of course, our friends at Taharka. I am officially out of Honey Graham Ice Cream, but we're gonna change that later today. I'm getting a tour of the factory with my mask on, so I'm looking forward to that. That's essential. Ice cream's essential. Taharka, made in Baltimore, but not in Shannon's district, but it will be if she is the city council president. I am Nester, along with former Baltimore County Executive and one-time Dundalk High Guidance Counselor, Don Moller. We present Baltimore Positive, bringing intelligent conversations in via wnst.net, AM 1570 in Tassie, Baltimore. Keep it calm, stay in local, and always Baltimore Positive.